Okay, it is six thirty on September first, two thousand twenty-two, and I call this city council meeting order. Uh, first thing is roll call, Mayor Protan Villa.
Here.
A council member bunker.
Here.
Council member Styler is absent, council member McClabb.
There.
Council member Clintiff.
Here.
And I have Mayor Weiss. Please write to the public. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then to the Texas flag, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one and. Sorry. And indivisible. Please remain standing for the invocation. Dear heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, thank you for our beautiful city, and Lord God, we just uh thank you for your gift of salvation. Lord God, we lift up our accountant to you tonight as he's recovering from knee surgery, and we just ask for uh your hand upon him and that he continues to heal. Um, Lord God, we just ask for your hand upon us as we make very important decisions tonight about the way that the city is going, and we just ask for your discernment. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, we have uh a public comment from.
Okay, what is a public comment, or what what is the up and down on the proper?
Proper name of project.
Okay, I'd like for you to have a copy of this. Is he coming in, or?
No, but his stuff is here if you want to. Unless you want to get it to somebody else.
Why, I have to.
Okay, folks, my name is Jack Mudd, I'm down. River Road here, um, and I'm here to clarify something uh tonight. About what is going on with some of my property that I had sold. This that I passed out to the council is a warranty deed, and it states in here that I sold this piece of property, and on exhibit B, it states in there what it would be used for, and it won't be used for anything else unless I approve it. And when you read what uh exhibit B says. There's a term going down around in Martindale, truck stop. Somebody is passing the word truck stop here, truck stop there. I want to know where the word truck stop comes from when they're referring to this piece of property. When it clearly states in here, on exhibit B, it will be a convenience store unless otherwise approved by me. And I haven't approved anything else other than a convenience store. Now, whoever passing this word around, every time I turn around, somebody's asking me about a truck stop. Where folks, I don't know, I've talked to some of you people, Sam, you and I've talked about it, have you heard me refer to it as a truck stop?
Yes, but I can't a- answer you when you're doing public comments supposedly.
Is it truck stop or convenience store?
Me, I can't answer you when you're doing pub- public comment supposedly, yes.
Well, anyway, that's the term and the terminology. Somebody is trying to mislead the city council or manipulate the wording to what is actually what it's gonna, what it is, and what the guy is trying to do that purchased the property from me. Now, it's in, it's recorded, this is a warranty deed. This was put in earnest money contract that would, the same wording, and then it was transferred to the warranty deed at the time of closing, and it's recorded in the courthouse that this piece of property is a convenience store. I don't know any, how to state it any clearer than than a convenience store. Now, I don't know, uh, somebody told me that one of the council meeting trucks come up over and over again. And uh, you know, and I wish that would be corrected with the city council or anybody else that is referring to this thi- piece of property.
Okay.
Thank you for the correction. Thank you for the correction.
Thanks for the clarification.
We're here in the room now.
Yes, I haven't heard. Okay, we have a public comment, Mary Beth Harper.
Okay, here's another copy. An extra copy, if you want me to leave it here.
Okay.
This is also to clarify some information from the last uh city council meeting. Um, after the uh Texas Department of Licensing, Licensing and Vaccination, TDLR, presentation at the last council meeting, there was some information uh said about the library. They went, we went back to chat with the TDLR about some of the comments made during that meeting specifically about the library. It seems as if the library has been targeted. Uh, the first one, library uh is now in ADA compliance, it always has been, but one little exception was the height of the handicap sign back in our handicap parking. There's a work order put in, we're waiting on the person to show up to to do the work, to raise the height of the handicap sign up to sixty inches. That's the only thing that we had. Uh, another comment was made about the handicap sign that said, library staff only. Now, the reason for that was because the police department uh was parking the paper processor parking his personal vehicle in that library spot. Uh, there was a very, I wrote a very nice letter from Mr. Ward to tell him to watch out for somebody parking in his handicap spot. They did not have the handicap stick on their vehicle. Uh, that sign has now been removed, it's just handicapped only back there. Uh, there was another statement about the van accessibility, there's plenty of room, we checked with TDLR. Uh, uh, we only did eleven feet for van accessibility, and there's eighteen feet of land in the handicap van. Uh, and that's another work order that has to be put in to think that we'll sign, we'll sign a payment up there for the van. Okay, now, another city employee at a different time said, the library does not have restaurants, and so we're not accessible. And that's not what TDLR and also the Texas State Library and Archives Commission said. Uh, there's no requirement for a restaurant, we should have access to a restaurant. And there's several different businesses around here that have restaurants, but we have access, so we don't have kind of restaurant in the building. It would be nice to do that one. Uh, and by the way, that Martindale's uh, this meeting room out here is not ADA compliant, uh, again, according to TDLR, uh, and also to some of the ADA uh recommendations. And so before you all start saying the library's not compliant, you need to check thirty years. Uh, and also there was some information put out about handicap, handicap porta potty uh out in the city parks. Um, and it is okay, we checked with uh uh some of the state resources, I don't have on your, uh, TCEQ or TDLR, uh, that you can put in a concrete sidewalk from the parking lot to that porta potty, and a concrete side sidewalk, as long as it doesn't impede the flow of floodwaters. Okay, and again, floodwaters get flowed in that concrete sidewalk. Uh, and it is completely impossible. I have a question, I'm walking on gravel, and I'm not really into that, not yet. Just mentally, anyway, uh, if you, if you look at some of the parks, for example, like Land Department, Wildfolds, San, the San Marcos River Park, uh, and Parks and Basestock, they all have, they're all lined with concrete. Anyway, just, that's my spiel.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay, so we'll move on to number two, the presentation. Virginia Parker has decided not to do a presentation since we'll be deal- dealing with the recommendations from the uh River Advisory Board later in the uh meeting. So we will now turn this over to Thomas Turk for uh to explain to us what's going on with our grant. Okay.
Thank you for having me this evening. Uh, so what I just wanted to do was give the council and the people here an update on the project. And we're currently very, very active right now in our preliminary design. We spent the last uh month or so trying to figure out how we're gonna get all this built while at the same time maintaining access and traffic in the, in the project area. And we uh got a good idea of how that's gonna work, and I thought it would be timely to kind of show you how it's gonna work. So you'll have some awareness of the impacts that all this is gonna have. So, we plan to build the project in five fundamental phases. And just to go an overview of the five of, the first phase is what I call a utility construction or adjustment phase, where we go in and we move all the underground utilities so that when we come in with a box culvert and all this storm drain being streeted, we don't hit any utility. Uh, in that first phase, uh, we're also gonna uh do the work in the cemetery, which is a short stretch of the box culvert plus.
A small cemetery.
The.
Great dent.
Both cemeteries.
Oh, okay.
So, so, good question, and let me speak to that. Uh, we put a microscope on the digs that were done a hundred years ago, and it. The center of the ravine. Our culverts are centered on that ravine, so we have improvements in both. Just working in one. Uh, so, uh, we're gonna build a short section of culvert, and we're also gonna build a downstream structure which is our interdication structure. Slow the water down before it gets into the ravine, and then there's a, a short river section, a pump of water to the natural grades in the ravine when that's a good idea. Uh, so that's the first phase. In that phase, the road will be entirely open, it's the same road that's out there today. However, uh, the contractor may uh need to use one lane of that road to bring in supplies and materials and lift things into place and whatever. And if that's, if that's the case, and it is, uh, he'll uh control the road with the flag, and so there will always be at least one lane. And you'll always be able to get to it, and the contractor will be required to provide that. Even if he has to stop what he's doing and move vehicles or put down gravel, it's always that. That's the first phase. Uh, the second phase is where we have most of the fun.
Sorry.
There we go. So, uh, this is the phase in which we're going to construct the two large box culverts. And we need about a thirty foot wide, one through there, to accomplish that. And so what we're gonna have to do is build a temporary road, and that's the brown road that you see there, a temporary road that, or that follows uh the right of way, both existing and the right of way after we acquire some parcels. And uh, so, uh, and we'll also use about twelve feet of the existing road uh for a lane on the north side, so you'll have two-way traffic. And then most of the construction is between those, those two roads, those two one-way roads.
So the temporary routes would be for, for traffic?
One of them will be the existing street, the other one will just be a gravel, buffer-wide gravel road. And then, uh, in the third phase, uh, we're actually going to close a, a part of, of the curves up there, uh, just on the we- west side of Plains Drive. Um, we'll, we'll maintain uh the Zangrilli's driveway, and we'll maintain the Martins driveway, uh, but we'll close the remainder of the road so they can finish the box culvert and build some of the storm drain. We'll also construct the ditch that goes to the north in the Harris Drive. So we'll have to put up barricades and signs that indicate to people that there's no street traffic through the road during that phase. You'll kind of notice, uh, we've got a little turnaround there, opposite Plains Drive. That little turnaround allows uh basically forms of loop, and it allows people to go down one way and come back the other. So, uh, everybody will have access to the property during the phase. And we're still utilizing the temporary road that we had built in the earlier phase, still using the existing road on the north side for, for traffic. And then in the fourth phase, we're gonna build nearly all of the new road. Uh, but we're gonna have a temporary road in place, but it is, it is only one way, east to west. Won't be two-way traffic. So, that's to make the, the long ride around all the Villanueva Street. That enables the contractor to build the streets uh much faster than if we had to maintain two-way traffic. And then in the, the last phase, you see that blue area there uh at the Lockhart River Road intersection, we're actually gonna close that intersection. Uh, we're gonna come in with full of that asphalt and build that intersection just as fast as we can, it'll probably take a couple of weeks. In the meantime, you'll be able to drive on the new road. You'll, you'll have access, new driveways and the whole thing. And then when he's finished with the intersection, contractor will come in and he'll put the final asphalt layer on everything. And then it'll be finished. So that's generally how we're gonna build it and what the temporary traffic is gonna look like during construction. Are there any questions I can answer about all that?
Yeah, quick question, si- since we, we, we had problems with inflation and supply. So we're gonna just, at this point, just go to the curb, stop at that point, and then see how, how much money we have left over, once, once, once that, and make a decision on the rest of the well line. Okay, uh, second question, when do you think you'll, you'll start breaking ground, in your opinion?
Um, there's factors in there that are a little hard to predict. I, I think the, the critical path is gonna be the right-of-way acquisition. We have eleven, we have eleven parcels to acquire. Um, another very rigid process that we go through to acquire those from, goes personally. And some of them may happen quickly, and some of them may take a long time, we really don't know. We've given ourselves about six months for that process, but it very well could take longer. Uh, I, I'd love to go to construction in the spring, that, that would be ideal, but we have to wait to see how the acquisition.
Maybe for sure, sometimes at twenty-three might be a latter part, you know?
We certainly, oh, certainly, there's another wild card. Um, uh, the communication lines in the south right-of-way line have to be relocated by the the frontier eighteen. Uh, and they are somewhat unpredictable. We're just beginning the utility coordination process with them because we now know more or less where our conflicts are, uh, and they have to replace basically the whole, the whole stretch there. Uh, and uh, we do not have a schedule for, they don't even know yet. We're, we're just, we're just kind of hot off the press, and we're just beginning that process, so. Um, so once we start coordinating with them, and they start absorbing this project and what they've gotta do, they'll come back to us with, uh, you know, some kind of schedule, and, and then we'll, then we'll be able to predict that with a little more accuracy, but right now, I don't know. Their work may be a, a separate pre-construction phase. Their work may be incorporated with our contractor's work, I don't know yet, just depends on, on their schedule, so. So there's a couple of uh unpredictables in there that we've gotta, gotta deal with.
Matthew McGovern, I have a question.
Yes, I have a question, number one, um, two, two parts, one, the culvert is definitely going under the road, one.
Or that's, yes.
Yeah, and number two, when you start stage two through stage four, where you're basically having the right-of-way road, the round road, what is your estimated timeframe from beginning to end of that? That's where we're basically gonna be restricted at some point in using the other easement, if you will, and requiring. What's your, what's your, what's your target, I guess, would be?
Really good question.
I know that's a difficult question, but that's the nut of it, you know, we're all, the whole, the whole town is inconvenience at that point. I know that when you do this corner, that's gonna be all hands on board, that's, I, I know that's gonna take a couple of weeks, but the rest of it's, you know, weather permitting.
My best guess is about six months.
Really?
Yes. We haven't put a lot of thought into that at this point in time.
I'd be impressed.
We will later, uh, but right now, we, we're just trying to figure out how to make everything work so that we get our, proceed with our design. Once we get closer to finalizing the design, then we gotta put a big cap on it, figure out how much this each phase requires in terms of time, and then what's the overall duration. My guess is about six months, because we've gotta basically build culverts, which is no easy thing to do, uh, and then he's gotta come back and hose those up too, so. Six months is my best answer, but it's gotta be asked.
I just wanna get a ballpark. Get a ballpark, thanks.
Okay, there's a question, Matthew.
Yeah, go ahead, yes, go.
You're gonna be going down residential and working in residential areas, what is the timeframe that you're working each day? I mean, is it like eight in the morning until five, is it seven until seven?
Uh, generally, it's about, it's about seven to five or six in the evening.
Seven in the morning?
Yeah, uh, and then they're not allowed to work on the weekends or at night unless they have permission from the city.
And then my second question, you're, you said you were gonna be putting the gravel road in, um, is that on their property? So.
Or after, after it's been acquired.
After, okay, so is there gonna be cleaning up after that?
Oh, absolutely, yes, we'll, we'll be taking that temporary road out, we'll be coming back in with the driveways, and we'll put down, we'll re, we'll re, re.
Okay, thank you.
But you get it back.
It's just the script.
And um, I was wondering if replacing the antiquated water line is still in the scope of the project? And how about the box culvert on Lockhart Street intersection, but not the Quail Run?
Correct.
Uh, and you're gonna do the driveway of the schoolhouse, replace the driveway?
We're replacing everybody's driveway.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, the next critical step is for us to prepare the uh field notes and plaques that you're gonna need to acquire the property, we should have those in about thirty days, so that kind of starts the.
Three days?
Thirty days.
Third day, okay.
And then a month. So that, that kind of, uh, that clears the way for you to begin the, the acquisition process. And in the meantime, uh, we are scheduling the preliminary design to be done right around the first of October, just according to the, the current schedule. But we're moving along, uh, things are following into place nicely. You know, we had taken a look at this job a couple of years ago, and, and this is, you know, we thought we would have to do it a certain way back then, it hasn't changed much, we, there hasn't been a lot of surprises. Uh, I, I think we've had very good news along the way. The utility conflicts that we've identified are significantly less than we thought, that's good news. So, things are following in place, I think things are looking good at this point, and, you know, we just see that all the time, so. Are there any other questions that I?
Did Jaren have any questions or comments? I think he's on.
No, not this time, what I really appreciate about this plan is that we're not in a situation where we have to relocate families away from their home. Um, I know in some of these projects, that, that is a potential, and I appreciate our engineers for, for making sure that people will maintain access to their homes throughout the course of the project.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, so, so we're pretty much on schedule at this point. Appreciate it, Mr. Turk.
All right.
Good job.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good evening.
All right, bye.
Okay, so we have the police report, and it's in our package. Chief was here. He's probably in his office, if you have any questions. Both cars are working, he drove to Dallas yes, yesterday and the day before, and got the Tahoe fixed, and so we're up and running full steam again.
So in the report, this is.
Let me, where's your question?
The, incident, any contact with people on the river with the can man?
Yes, it's on the other page.
Let's see.
Uh, sandwich.
Open container.
Yep, here it is, here it is.
Container position.
That's open container.
Position. Here, here, here's, here's Tommy now.
Sorry about that, I was doing open record request.
So his question, uh, chief ward, was about the uh incidents in the park, I think.
Yeah, and specifically, uh, have you contacted anybody that has cans in the higher pole?
So this report right here is for the month of July. Um, we didn't get it in July for the second time, uh, for the second meeting, but uh, we did not have anybody, the ones who contacted, we didn't write any citations or anything to for the cans or having disposable containers in the river.
Previous month?
Previous month, we had some, yes, sir.
And that was identified in the report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that was.
Yeah, it was on, he is two pages, he was on the second page.
Oh, okay, well, okay, but you'll continue to report that, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, absolutely, okay, thank you.
Um, I had a question about speeding, uh, I've noticed you more fre- frequently, or the other officers on eighty. Do you find that more speeding is going along on the highway or on the city streets or on nineteen seventy-nine?
We, we write more citations out there, we run traffic in here, we can, like on the city streets, we do run traffic in there while we're patrolling around, and we can sit in there for several hours, but more traffic is on eighty. So, um, you concentrate where more traffic is, we, we do patrol and run radar on the city, on the surface streets.
About seventy, nineteen seventy-nine.
Nineteen seventy-nine, well, especially when we're going, excuse me.
Is that one pretty busy too?
It, it's busy, uh.
It's not as busy.
Not, not a lot of speeders, we, we run radar when we're running around, so we go check the parks, we gotta. Not, not a lot of speeders. We, we run radar when we're running around. So we go check the parks. We gotta do, we're doing that. So we do. I don't really write the locations of our citations. Our report will just get doubled.
I think it's great. It's very informative.
Quick, quick question. Passing certain vehicles, is that the one when they pass in the center line?
No, passing certain vehicles is the fellow to slow down or move over law. So you can pass a wrecker or another patrol officer. Gets out of a traffic stop, you gotta slow down 20 miles an hour below the posted treatment or move completely out of the lane.
Gotcha.
Um, I just, this is just a quick question. We're close to a cemetery there and occasionally you see the police coming. And, and in my days or everyone's days, people would pull over to the right as a courtesy. Is that a courtesy or a law?
It's a courtesy. Well, and when the police are coming by, you have to move over. But when it's just for the funeral procession, it's a courtesy. But you can't cut through there and you can't cut them off or anything. That, that's not the law.
Thank you.
Great, great report. Love it.
Oh, okay. Disregard, no passing zone. That's why.
Yes, that's, that's the no passing zone. There's, you wrote seven in July.
Were there any, any 18-wheelers? Off the top of your head?
Not, not to my knowledge. I didn't get an 18-wheeler.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, Adrian, do we have to have a, a motion to accept?
No, it was more of a report. The consent item was, I wasn't sure if it was going to be presented or not.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to new business. And last meeting, uh, we were introduced to the Tammy Fest weekend. And so now we've, uh, are putting it on the agenda to ask the council if they would like to donate money from the hotel motel tax. There is information here and, uh, Terry Hendricks is here to talk to us about the event.
Here's the official application.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
And here's a spare map.
Thank you.
And then I had, and because there's a lot of.
Oh, we had a copy of that.
I know, but the, the problem with what you have in your books, and I'm really sorry about this, is that I was really hesitant to proceed with this because of COVID. I didn't want to host a super spring event and I also was worried about the nonprofit getting stung to host the event that we'd have to cancel because of, of COVID. So I waited and then when monkeypox happened. But we, I wrote that out and then, um, so now here we are and I can do it. So it was, I made the decision, um, August 10th, to proceed with Tammy Fest. And August 18th, I came here and, and in your books is phase one. But this looks more like what's, what's our final agenda. But like, so it's, it's pretty, well, it is, but with, with the budget, with the timeline, with, um, with, in your books, it's going to have a gossip brunch on Sunday, which I took off. I took that off because I want to focus on Friday, Saturday and not overextend. So, but on Sunday, we're having an event, but that, that happens on World Reclon in Martindale, not downtown. So, um, so you're, the budget is the total cost of the events. Yeah, I, I put that.
On page two.
Yeah.
On the bottom.
Yeah, it's, I put that somewhere is the to, oh, yeah, it's 8959. It's the total cost, 8,959. But I'm asking 5,000 and I, I minimize the cost. It, it, very detailed itemization. So I'm asking for 5,000 to help us cover basic costs. And the other part, we can come up with from ticket sales from that Friday night event. And something else that's really important to note, and, and I can't stress this enough, is that, um, the, the entertainment budget is dead on. So if you don't need receipts, I can provide them. So for our advertising, when that event concludes, I really think it's important that when you're donating money, that every dollar is accounted for. So, um, I will provide receipts for what's there. And then what's also important is that, um, is that this event, uh, if you create an event that's conducive to all ages and make it towards accessible to people with social mobility issues, and you also make it where it's not about alcohol, it's about the event, it's about the music, it's about being present. You attract families. Well, if you attract families, you get their families to come into the town. Then you get tourism. So this, this will be the second time that I hosted in downtown Martindale. But it'll be the first time that we had it over the course of the weekend and the first time that I wanted to do a street dance. Street dance is important. Um, I feel like it's important for a lot of reasons. It's important because it just makes it more free. And that's why the map is really important that everybody looked at. But also to be transparent, if you look at the website, it's totally out to date. So you can go and you can click on the links and say, okay, what is she talking about? If you click on the links, it shows you. The only thing that's not on the website are those hard costs. It would be unethical to print what I'm paying the band to come in from New Mexico. You might wonder, why are you hiring a four-piece panda of women from New Mexico? And I explained that earlier around today. I did that because they have a following of people that live in Austin and have, but they're kind of the, the upper tier queue that have a house in Toews, a house in Hill Country. And when we booked them last time, they brought in, we had over 200 people. They've got the Carlton's and a lot of, they were, most all of them were out of town. And, um, and that was over the course of the day. And so that, that, so it's weird, but we actually marketed to us in Mexico. We're out of big following. A, a lot of Tammy, a lot of what happens with the OIOU, well, all of it is based on my career in music. And also, um, my long time work with people with, with disabilities. I have epilepsy and I also have dyspnea, which is part of the central nervous system breakdown of the components at the base of the skull. And so, but that makes me a perfect candidate to, uh, to run this thing and, and to put it on and, and make a place where people can come. That if they have an autistic, autistic child running around and, you know, uh, we don't have to worry about getting hit by a car if we block that street. Which is what we need to have. We need to have it blocked off where people can, can bring their kids out. Wheelchairs can, can come around and where, where, where everyone can enjoy a free event, which is something else that's really important to me is that we don't have a ticket price on Saturday. And so that's, I'd like to open it up to any questions, um, that anyone might have. And if you see anything that I can improve on to make it easier to look at what's happening. Please let me know on the website. I'll fix it.
Uh, so is some of this going to be indoors? I know you were.
Yes. Okay, that's, that, that's why.
That's why you were worried about.
I redid, I redid the way it is because it was such, right, other paperwork was really confusing. But Friday night is a night that's indoors and that's with Texas State University and that's with the Woodlift collections. There's three artists. One of them are archives. Our life's work is at Texas State at the Woodlift collections. And so the curator of that museum is going to be here and he'll emcee that event. And that'll be inside at Carlton's place, which he's dominating for us.
On the other side of the library?
Yes. Yes.
Right.
And that, and that's the Friday night event. And that's taking, that's 35. And we're, as of right now, we're halfway sold out and it's only been on sale for three days.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, so it's.
It'll be a soft color then.
Yeah, so it'll, it'll sell out. And, and so with, with every we lack would, um, in, in plans, we'll, we will make it up from that ticketed event on Friday. And, um.
And the Woodlift there bring the musicians?
Uh, okay, we're, OIOU is paying for the musicians. I, but I, I learned the Woodlift involved because of their marketing to alumni. And also because I'm a part of the Woodlift collections and I liked, I liked putting that together. That three artists that have their archives at the Woodlift will be here.
Oh.
And it'll be, it's on, I can run it in one of them and then two, two other artists. I'll sound better. I just haven't done my vocal exercises, but. But.
So it's not till October.
Yeah. So all three of us will, we'll talk about our archives. It'll happen Friday. And, and it's, it was important to keep the ticket price reasonable. Because we have people, most of our people are on fixed income and are, um, they can't afford a high ticket price. So I, I don't like that ticket price that makes it where, where our poor audience can't come. You know, so that's what, that's what Friday is. And to me, Friday, that ticketed event is a buffer for what we lack. I would just love for once for the OIOU to move forward because every dollar we pay is a dollar. We can't pay someone to come in and fill our community and teach a class at the OIOU. It's, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's like we, we're constantly chasing our tail. We had a, you know, so that, that's why I'm here. I don't like to see our budget of what the amount we have in.
Uh, no.
Here it is, up here.
Yeah, we, we still have.
Forty-four.
Just a quick clarification on, on that number. That's, that's the cash on hand, not necessarily the budget. We'll have to talk with Dwayne about how this would impact the fiscal year '22 budget, or does this roll into the fiscal year '23 budget? I think there's clearly arguments for both, that it could be either or. As we set the budget for fiscal year '22, um, we allocated, working off memory here, but something like $7,000 for arts programming, $3,000 for signage and $8,000 or somewhere near there for. So if we were going to cover under the fiscal year '22 budget, we likely would need to modify our fiscal year '22 budget through, um, a construction or maintenance in that budget item. We have the cash on hand, which is, which is what was shown on the screen. But we still have.
So from that amount.
Right, yeah, I think we'll, we'll have.
Just a moment. So Jared, so from that amount that, that is showing, so you're, that's where the money would come from? But it would need to be amended according to what budget year we're in?
So, there's two ways we track our money. One is cash on hand. It's kind of a cash flow data point. And so what you see here is a cash flow data point. As of such date, here's how much was in the bank. Any given year, we develop a balanced budget based off of estimated revenues and estimated expense and planned expenses. So when we, within the fiscal year, we were not going to pull any of the cash from prior years. We were going to expand, I believe it was $18,000 in the hook-up cash restricted fund. I would still have left a remainder of the cash on hand. So the, there, there's no question that we have the ability to fund this event. Future events that might come up. It's just a matter of how we capture it with our budget. If we capture it within fiscal year '22, I think that is clear in our argument to do so. Or if we want to put it in our fiscal year '23, based on that's where, you know, we will check this cash. We can, we can do it either way. Probably the easiest way is to put it in the fiscal year '23. I think the best way, however, is probably going fiscal year '22 and just reallocating funds that were going to be in our advertisement budget and moving that from advertisement to performance programming.
Can I, can I address that? Because I think that's important. That's what I wanted to talk to you about was that, that the only way we're going to get people to this event is going to be advertising. And we have really good luck with social media. And so I ran it out on the, what I gave to you, Catherine, has, which I started social media advertising. And so what I do is I do these, these little, I call them eggs of social media to see, am I going to get a hit? Uh, I did something wrong. If I'm too worried, nobody looks at it. So, and so, and so the art, I really feel like the advertising budget says 600, but I can see it creeping up more and here's why. Uh, it won't affect the amount that I'm asking for you, but our, our plans are to book the OIOU out at least up to eight months. And then when I'm, when I'm doing marketing for Tammy Fest and I'm in San Antonio at KSYM and I'm talking about Tammy Fest, that, that, or I go to their news, their morning news and people click on me at one, we have an active calendar. It's not just, it doesn't just die in November. And so while I'm, while I'm doing that and while I'm doing social media, it needs to be where we have a calendar that's just completely hooked up to where someone March 2023 can come take our class. That's what's really important. The biggest bang for the buck is for me to have basically the next six to eight months booked, advertise it on Facebook. Maybe, I have a $600 advertising budget, but if I creep it up to a thousand, it, it doesn't matter the amount that I'm requesting from you, but if I creep it up to a thousand, then I could see us sell out for both weekends for our women's retreat that happens at Martindale Schoolhouse in February. The only way to get new people coming and we need new people coming. That's the only way we grow. So, so that, that tackles the advertising. And, and the other advertising one is the section on my website that I built called Play and Stay. And it's only through help and community help that I can really build this. We're running into the problem of people coming here wanting to take, we have a mosaic class, super popular, but it's Saturday, Sunday. So we have people come in from Houston where they must stay. You know, so that, that's something that happens all the time. That's why I built Play and Stay. It wasn't just for Tammy Fest. It was just internal on my website because most of our people come in from out of town. And I can also provide, uh, concrete data from our PayPal stuffs. And I can also have concrete data, which I included from Facebook and Instagram and, you know, reels and all the other stuff that you do that you can, you can really pull data now.
I think, I think it's important that, that we list all of our taxpaying Airbnbs.
Absolutely.
Somewhere in the advertisement.
Not just on, not just on Airbnb. That is so, it's convoluted and, and that site.
Well, that's where our money is coming from and they, those places need to be.
If I could just get them physical, is there a way, like, I know, like, is there a way to get people to list, to, to say their property address and say, look this up?
We need to list them on our website somewhere. I don't know. Suggestions, anybody?
We've got a few on our, on our website.
Okay, we need to make sure that all.
Like if you look at Play and Stay, it lists.
Yeah, I have a list somewhere in my.
Like that. I'll, I'll take all that. And if somebody.
Helps us justify spending our money.
Every, every, like right now, it, I have Airbnb, I have, I have Martindale Schoolhouse, I have, I have, um, there's, there's. Yeah, I have several listed. I have, um, businesses that are separate. Businesses listed there. So if you pull up Play and Stay, you'll see it's a pretty, it's, it's pretty, pretty big now. But I was just wondering, am I missing, do I need to add? The more people I add, the better. Um, and all, and, and one thing that we're going to run up against on this particular weekend is Green Wine and Music Festival, which, but before we worry about that, I'm going to, I'm going to include Green Hall in our social media marketing. So I'll make sure that we list them as an interest so that wherever they're marketing to, we're going to pay back. And that, I think, ever against this Positive Limits Festival. That's, that happens the first two weekends of October. So Airbnb prices are hyped that weekend. I've already ran into that with people wanting to come in from out of town. But it, it just, what I love about this, and this is the way my brain works, I look at it and it, as a creative endeavor. And so every time there's something like that, I think, okay, what's the workaround? And that's what directly, it's taking these other Airbnbs and, 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 um, you know, just marketing what's left.
I had a question for Jared. Um, you, you mentioned that in the 2022 budget, we had $3,000 we were going to spend on. we were going to spend on ad advertising for the billboard and we never did, did, did that. So you're saying there might be a chance of reallocating that money that we were going to spend on advertising from the hotel tax money?
Yeah, there, there were three, um, components to budget covered that were allocated in the restricted funds for hotel tax use. I'm going to pull the exact numbers up, so I don't misquote. It's available on our, on our website for those who are interested to review it. All right, here we go.
So you're saying we would, you would rather wait to know how much that amount is before we, would you're saying we should make a motion tonight to, uh, reach some resolvement on, on this?
No, I don't know if I'm suggesting that. I'm, I'm, it's more a procedural, um, concern. We don't necessarily spend the cash on hand. We, we spend what we allocate in the budget. And so, uh, to recap and make sure I don't misquote anything, we had, under the hotel tax restricted, um, funds in our fiscal year twenty-two budget, we had seven thousand dollars allocated to advertising, eight thousand dollars allocated to art programs and three thousand dollars allocated to signage. Eight, I believe we spent, um, just shy, maybe right at eight, eight thousand dollars for our art program. So as far as a budget perspective, we, we've maxed out that line. However, the city council wants to entertain making an amendment to that budget like we have previously with, you know, the lease vehicles, um, issues to increase that funding line item. We could reallocate, if you will, from the advertising budget to the arts programming budget or the hotel tax restricted fund.
So how, how, how much did you say was in the ad advertising budget again?
Seven thousand dollars.
So, so that'll just be a future item that we'll, we'll need to put on so that we can increase that if, if Dwayne suggests that we put it in this fiscal year. Is it, that in our fiscal year in yesterday?
No.
End of September.
And this month, okay.
Yeah, so there, there is an argument that this could fall within either fiscal year. It kind of, typically it's whenever you make the obligation, um, you know, set a contract, if you will, to, to provide those funds that out, that allocation of obligation gets encumbered upon the fiscal year budget in which it was made. So, um, we could do that now and encumber the fiscal year twenty-two budget, even though the outlay, the check after being cashed might not, or the event happening might not be involved. Or conversely, if we didn't want to go through the, the rigmarole of changing our fiscal year twenty-two budget around, we already have an opportunity to, um, have a fresh budget on October first, and we could put this on the fiscal year twenty-three. Now, you're spending, you're potentially spending a lot of money very, very early in the fiscal year without an opportunity to prioritize spending for a mere that fiscal year, that, for that purpose, I think fiscal year twenty-two might be the preferred approach. That way you still have flexibility going into your next year.
Question, Jared, how much money outstanding is the city owed for ho, excuse me, hotel taxes at this point? Is that a valid question? Like, is there a?
We have not, we have not conducted a tax compliant audit, um, to date. So it would, any number that I would give, it would be merely a guess. I don't have even a good guess.
Well, then I think I would like to make a motion to, uh, move five thousand dollars from the twenty-twenty-two budget of the hotel tax fee from the advertising, uh, budget of twenty-twenty-two, which is more than five thousand. But I would like to, Al, to move five thousand from the advertising budget to the arts budget of the twenty-twenty-two budget to increase the art budget by five thousand dollars from the advertising budget. From this.
The hotel tax.
From this year's budget of the hotel tax money.
That sounds right. I mean, do we need to do this? You said it was mainly procedural.
Well, yeah, you do.
We do have to.
We do have, have to in order to get the money from the twenty-twenty-two budget that hasn't been allocated. So I'm suggesting move five thousand from advertising to the arts.
There are only three thousand in the advertising. Isn't that right, Jared?
Yeah, it's, um.
Want to share it?
Sure, yeah.
Are we doing something on the budget today?
No.
Yeah, that's, that, we might run into an issue with the language on the agenda, but Captain, we're doing this, wants to weigh on the, Adrian, if you have a.
Sorry?
The, the concern about what we have for the agenda, the language in the agenda, whether we cover a modification.
We have a motion on the table, so then there would be another motion and then we would be able to discuss.
A second.
Thing is, the motion is to pull the, I guess what's on the agenda is, I'll put this full screen.
So the question, uh, Adrian, is since it's not on the agenda, do you make a motion?
Does there actually?
It says that. Right, from the hotel, hotel tab.
For Tammy Fest.
So.
We can just grant, we can grant that and then.
And then.
And then let the, uh.
Well, it has to come from the twenty-twenty-two budget, though.
But that can be, oh, well.
Just let us talk among ourselves.
Well, someone has to second it maybe before we can talk.
Well, yeah, no, well, nobody.
I'll second it.
Nobody has to second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, can I kind of like, just like think, just say what I'm thinking?
Yeah.
So, um, I, I still feel like, um, there is not, I know that, uh, well, with, with festivals and stuff, and I know from experience like the River Fest is, I would like to also take a focus like on recycling and having recycling containers out there, which that's another added cost because we would have to contract those items from TDS. So I would like to have, uh, you know, that to be recycled. Also, what hasn't been factored in to here is like, uh, our security, uh, cost for the police officers. That is.
But that comes from a different fund, is that correct?
No, that's part of her budget. We're not sponsoring it.
I would be in charge of recite, like, I put down a hard cost, so any other, when it says T P A, so there's T P A that happens here. Uh, here it goes, security. Lock off speed, I'm not sure what that costs. Downtown merchants for the vendors, I don't know what, what it costs. That, that part, I'm, I've never done that before and I sent an email out today I need help with vendors and I, I don't mind, uh, I have a volunteer that's willing to work that. But before I did the vendors in San Marcos, I just really felt like it was important to get the vendors to your market.
Oh, yeah.
They should get first dibs, you know?
Definitely. So my whole reason for like mentioning all those things is I think that we should up your budget to eight thousand dollars or to the total amount that it is, if we have that amount. Because like you said, you're a nonprofit, you're here in town. I think with those, um, those amounts allocated to just kind of like also put a focus into the town and to our community and to those resources that because you don't have it in there, you don't have the actual factor. And like you said, you're always kind of coming in from behind the line. So with having any, um, opportunity to, maybe you won't even use the total eight thousand, but I would like to see it, you know?
And like I, and we'll turn in receipts.
So I would definitely like to see that amount increased to, to eight thousand if my council members also believe that that would be a beneficial, um, for this event.
That's above the line, I think. That's bad.
That's.
And there's a motion on the table.
But we're up for discussion, so I could discuss it. And then that's how much we gave to the Fourth of July event.
Jared, what kind of restrictions are on here? I mean, here they were talking, here there, there's some costs here for tables, chairs, restrooms, uh, some other supplies, coffee.
Excuse me, we're not here to plan her event.
No, 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 I'm just saying, is that okay?
Yeah, but we don't need to analyze everything and cover every single cost. So we're getting way off track. So we.
Yeah. I would take the perspective, Jan, that, um, the money is, is being used to put on the art programming. How, how it's used in terms of line items is in furtherance of conducting an art program. And that's up to the, the recipient of the funds.
Okay.
I don't think we need that.
So we're not going to get in trouble for nitpicking stuff like that.
All we're doing is. We're not hosting the event. We're just, she's asking the city for funds.
Yeah, and whatever, whatever deficit there is, we'll handle it. But I'd be want to know things like recycling is important. Anything I left off that you've seen in the past, um, is one security guard enough is.
Yes, the police said, yes, you know, um, well, one police officer. Now, I don't know about the other security and that would be something that you could.
And we'll have insurance, we'll have insurance for that day for sure. We'll have that. So really, I'm, I'm here, I know that, I, I know from firsthand experience that, that these aren't easy times for anyone these days and I don't want us to be, come along to your finances. It would be great to have some help. It's going to take a village to get, to, what I foresee is, is I learned the ropes this year and then next year we really build on it. But wouldn't it be great? I'm, I never forgot this. A long time ago, I played this place. It was in, you know, the lotto and it was built because the people that had this amphitheater were tired of going to events, were people that had wheelchairs, could not come because there was not accessibility. So it was Kristofferson and I opened and the whole first, I'd say fifteen rows was nothing but wheelchairs. So the VIP was wheelchairs and everybody else after that was the crowd. And that stayed with me. The O I U was started because of a lack of a place for people to come. Uh, society is not built for people with disabilities. You have to work down that. That not, this isn't, again, isn't just for people with disabilities, but I've played so many festivals where it's all men with three names and no women and where it's harder to get for me to get around, let's list somebody in a wheelchair. So right here in my hometown, I want to see a diverse crowd. I want to see a family friendly atmosphere. I want to see accessibility and I want to take this thing to the man where it's Tammy Fest and then the music festival. That's what I'm trying to do. So whatever y'all can do, I hope would be great. And, and, um, I won't take slight if you can't. I'm just here to let you know that I'm here and I'm, um, I don't think you'll make anybody more stubborn than me. So when I say, when I say it'll happen, it's already happening.
Okay, so we have a motion to move funds from advertising, five thousand dollars for the advertising to the arts line and we have a second.
Well, I'm giving the opportunity up to our city council, other city council person there if I should rescind my motion and she wants to make another motion. Turn pretty soon out. I'm, I mean, you had mentioned that and so I'm.
Or you could just, uh, yes, you could rescind it. Yeah, just amend your motion, Sam.
I'm rescinding the original motion that I made and then I think then, uh, based on the suggestions of our city council person that I make a motion that the amount for Tammy Fest be increased to eight thousand dollars from our hotel and tax budget.
I would, I would say eight thousand six hundred and fifty-nine.
I make a change, eight thousand six hundred and fifty-nine from the hotel tax money, which is rich and a great amount now. And I think going into next year, we will have to have a request for proposal and say quarterly, we will ask others for constructive plans of how we will use this money going into the next year and have suggestions on a quarterly basis so we can more so react in ample amount of time to provide these funds. But, but, but again, I'm rescinding my motion to eight thousand six hundred and.
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine. That's my motion. Is there a second?
That's pretty specific. We can round it off if you want.
Jared.
Any input, Jared?
Jared, can we do that? There's seven thousand in advertising and three thousand in signage. How do we have to make that motion?
I, I think it's fine. And I'm, I'm not, I don't know if, can't on the line, but. If somehow we, we made an error, um, we'll, we'll review the recording of tonight's meeting and then we can always come back and and try again if we do something.
Okay, do we need this in the form of two motions? One to amend the, the budget and then one to donate the money? Do we need two motions or can that be made in one?
I would do two.
Yeah, two, two would be cleaner.
Two motions would be cleaner. So we need a motion first to move the money, uh, from the line items in the budget. From the, from the advertising and signage to move eight thousand, whatever that amount was from those two line items into the arts, art programs. So if you make that motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion then to say, let's move, uh, the line items of advertising and signage from the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year budget of the hotel tax, move eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine dollars, eight thousand six hundred and fifty-nine. Move it from advertising and signage to the arts budget. And that's my motion.
Okay.
Can you stick into it?
Motion, do I have a second?
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, so Mike, how do you vote?
I'll vote for it.
And so, hi. Okay, so now I need a second motion to donate that amount of money to the Tammy Fest.
I make a motion to, uh, donate eight thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars from the arts portion of our hotel tax money of twenty-twenty-two to Tammy Fest for October seventh through ninth.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, so I have a second. Mike, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Sonya, how do you vote? Okay, so the motion, both motions, Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you.
And please, you know, um, what we need is hard to mean so that I, whenever we, whenever we receive a plan, I really feel like we're accountable to show what we're doing. And so sometimes I can go overboard with that, but I don't think that that's ever my thing. I'll have, I'll keep, record keeping so you know exactly where your hard earned dollars for time. And so, thank you.
Yeah, check on permits and whatever else you might need to.
I, I think that actions speak louder than words. So let's just say that after we have done, I hope that you're happy. And I really appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next item. Um, an amendment to the City of Martindale Code of Ordinances, Chapter seventy-three. Speed limits to adjust all municipal streets shall not be higher than twenty-five miles per hour. And I'm the one that has proposed this.
Let me get the chief in here. I want, I want his expertise.
Now, this, this is city streets, um, so that would be like downtown.
All of Main Street and all side streets ago.
Well, and you notice that the next one is to put it twenty miles an hour. Oh, he's already.
I'd have his input.
He's, he said it was fine.
He agreed with it.
You've talked to him about it, then yeah, but then tell us what he said.
Well, he, one of the things that happens, so it's thirty miles an hour, so people go thirty-five, if it's twenty-five, people will go thirty.
So.
Okay. I know, cuz I do it.
Could you, could you push that, that's a really good dot, that one, you say sixteen?
So what, yeah, what I wanted to say, so Adrian went out and did a traffic study.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna let him talk about that.
I'm sorry, I dumped.
So you're fine.
You're, uh.
So, I believe last Wednesday, um, I, I owe credit to Kevin for having the patience to deal with me on this. Um, we went out to the city, so throughout the city, we drove around, I used a GPS tracking my location, and marked all the green spots be a traffic, uh, speed limit sign, and the red dots are stop signs. Now, um, it is required by the city secretary to keep a catalog of the street signage, so we got two birds and one stone, we get a trap, a bit of a traffic study, and a also, uh, complying with our city ordinances. Now, um, there is, there's all the signs throughout the city, but what is valuable is a chart on top, um, we just get to that. It'll show you how many city signs that we have, and how many state signs that we have. Um, there's also a estimate of how much changing these signs would cost. So the orange gold si- row shows how many city signs we have, the red is state signs. Um, so the city has nineteen speed limit signs throughout the city, there are seven that are thirty miles per hour, so those seven will be affected by this ordinance change by regulating all municipal streets to be at most twenty-five miles per hour, and if the city council wanted to, um, amend to a lower speed limit, then it would be done by a action item through city council, which is the following item after this, uh, current item that we're on. And so, is there any questions about these locations of the thirty miles?
So, these are the ones that we need, or these the ones we're gonna change?
These would be the ones that we change.
For seven.
And so one, there's, I believe, two or three near Lockhart Street, there's some on Northwest River Road, um.
Speed limit's a hundred and forty dollars, okay.
And, uh, I wish I could show you my program, but I've also identified what is the speed limit of each sign, um, that is marked on the map.
So, of course, it's not that much.
No, it's, it's relatively, we estimated about a thousand dollar expense in under being almost.
Can we, can we put our, put our input on this?
Yeah, of course.
I highly agree with all of you, because I've been talking about this for years, because people walk, they cycle, they walk their dogs, I walk my dog every day, and people drive too fast, and I really think it's a good thing, cuz that's what people do around here.
Right.
If it slows people down, I think it's a good thing.
Right.
If they wanna go fast, get on Highway eighty, you know? So, that's, that's right up my alley.
I had a question about thirty-five FM nineteen seventy-nine, now, if FM nineteen seventy-nine is a state highway, how can the city get involved in changing the speed limit?
Wouldn't.
We're not.
So did the ordinance would say, well, the ordinance says municipal streets, so that is taken care by a text dot, and so we can't, uh, that would require a bunch of traffic studies and whatnot, but since we have more say about what is in our streets here in the city that the city maintains and pays for, then, um, those are the ones we'll be controlling.
So which of the two state signs in pink that you have in the lowest line there, which of the those, where are those two signs?
So those two signs are along nineteen seventy-nine, you got to give a bit of a delay with the lag of the map, but I can show you here, um, just about.
I think any reduction's great, cuz like I said, we got cyclists everywhere.
Right.
This is the premier cycling area because universities here, I used to ride a lot on seventy-nine, and people drive way too fast.
So the, the thirty-five signs are along this stretch here. I can hover over it, so there's thirty-five, you see that?
It did get that lower along there from forty-five to thirty-five, but we can't do anything on.
Text dot.
The city can't do anything on that.
Unfortunately, sharing screens does.
What about Lockhart Street?
Lockhart Street.
Is that gonna say thirty?
No, that's the one that we want to lower, and so I did go out and I tried to find out those electronics signs that you had suggested, George, the Joe had suggested, they're like two thousand dollars, two to four thousand dollars. So, um, my suggestion is just put more signs on along the road, there's only one on each end, so if we put a couple more signs on nineteen seventy, I mean, on Lockhart Street, that should help, and if we put a couple more on Northwest River Road, maybe that would help.
We, I had a citizen tell me that since we had the overlay done, that people are flying.
Yeah.
It's like a racetrack, so it's a good thing. Totally agree.
Uh, if on the bottom of those signs, could we add, watch out for pedestrians?
Yes.
Cuz then also, maybe that would also make people be like, hey, I need to watch out for people walking, so.
You know, the average sign is about twenty-five dollars, twenty dollars.
Very reasonable.
And so, e- even if we're to change all those thirty to twenty-five, and multiply by two, it's still two hundred and eighty dollars, and it's, it's understandable to do that, watch for pedestrians.
I'm in agreement.
Thank you.
Okay, I wanna make a motion that we, ordinance number two zero two-two dash zero nine zero one, and ordinance of the City of Martindale, Texas, amending Chapter seventy-three of the Code of Ordinances, revised the speed limit of all municipal streets to be no higher than twenty mi- twenty-five miles per hour, making such other findings and provisions related to the subject and declaring an effective date.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? I'll second. Okay, I have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, Jan, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Sam, how do you vote?
Uh, aye.
Okay, so the motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to the next one, um, amend the speed limit at Martindale Main Street to be twenty miles an hour. Um, we're talking about this two blocks right here, where there are so much people crossing back and forth and everything, if we can slow this traffic down to twenty miles.
In our ordinance, there's a term for the downtown area, I don't know exactly what it is, but, uh, so we make it.
Corridor.
Yeah.
Who said that?
That sounds fine, but I forget what it's called in the.
Correct.
The ordinance is, I can look it up real quick.
Totally, totally agree, and I like that diagram right there, that's excellent information, Adrian, showing the, the vitality rates of going to, from forty to twenty is pretty, it's pretty substantial, and if we could save a life.
Downtown district, I think.
Yeah.
It's a very, pretty obvious that we need to reduce, especially around here, cuz the live music scene, and we got people walking across the street, and I'm totally in agreement with that.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hey, I, I've, I've been trying, I've been trying to get in, I just, I just called Jared, he let me in, uh, but the problem that we've got with this is the prima facie speed limit in Texas is thirty, and you cannot lower the speed limit below the prima facie speed limit in Texas without conducting a traffic study unless, there's very specific requirements, but one of those, one of those is, i- in a situation like this, you can lower it to twenty-five if it is in what is, what meets the definition of an urban district, uh, a- and that's, that's a, that's a very specific requirement, uh, a- and, and I don't know i- if we have in fact gone through the process of determining if we are in an urban district. Um, what that, what that is, and I'm, I'm pulling it up real quick, is, um, it's a territory adjacent to and including a highway, if the territory is one, not in the municipal, not in the municipality, and is improved with structures that are used for business, industry, or dwelling houses, and located in, anyway, but we, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have to do that, there's, there, there's no absolute basis to just simply reduce speed limits without a traffic study.
Okay.
What's involved, what's involved with a traffic study?
An engineer.
And, so how much does that cost us? Approximately?
We'd have to ask, get a quote on it.
Is there, is there other town, other?
Now.
I mean, is there other town, is there any cases where other cities have done this on their own? Has there been any ramifications?
Well, I mean, so, so, yeah, I mean, that's, that's always something that you can look at, um, it's, this is mandated under Chapter five forty-five of the Transportation Code. Now, what would have to happen is someone would have to essentially file a lawsuit claiming that the Transportation Code is violated and seek injunction relief to have, uh, to have the, uh, the, the speed limit changed back.
What is, what are the odds of that, bud?
I, 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 I don't, I don't think the odds are great, but.
I'd say, I'd say, I'd say continue on, we've already passed it, I'd say just do it. That's my opinion.
Again, I, I think, I think you're probably right on that, Mike, that it, that it's a very low probability that anyone's ever gonna do anything, but understand that, that is, that, that is the, the, the risk, however minor it is.
Do we?
And, and I mean.
Cuz, my question is, could we be sued for a million dollars? I mean, could we be, would be held up in court?
No, no.
No. I mean.
No, I mean, quite frankly, the question. No, no, it, it, it's, it's a, it's a technical violation, now, granted, you, you have, you have been warned by, by me, so i- if, if someone sued you, they, they could, they could seek recovery of a small amount of attorneys fees that they incurred in getting the relief, but my, my advice would be if someone ever does take actions, that you immediately rescind the ordinance and change the speed limit back, or, or do it the right way.
And that would be sufficient in most case, they, most courts cases, right? We, if we got, if it did happen, somebody complained, we'd have to rescind it, right? Correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's right, or it would be found in statute, in my opinion.
And what was that traffic?
Again, it's, it's Chapter five forty-five of, of the, of the Transportation Code.
Okay.
Let me ask another question, oh, I wish the, the police chief was here, most people, like, we give them five over, so, you know, if it gets people to slow down five miles per hour, I mean, we might, if you don't, if you, I guess my question is, if we're, if we're, if we can't do it at twenty, and, and somebody does it at thirty, we can still give them a ticket, because they're over the speed limit. So maybe it's like Catherine said, people see the sign and they slow down. I, I personally, I want the rest of the city council to think, I think it's worth the risk, myself personally.
Okay, but, um, can't.
I still think we ought to do more.
Well, if it costs.
But you can't say we can lower it to twenty-five, just not.
Maybe twenty, maybe we ought to do twenty, can we do twenty-five?
Did you say we can do?
In an urban area.
Can, uh, Kent, did you say we can lower it to twenty-five?
Oh, okay.
Well, let's do that, that's a possible. Let's do the twenty-five.
What you can do, well, ho- hold on, what, the law, the law is that a city council may lower the mandated speed limit by performing an engineering and traffic investigation and determining that the prima facie speed limit, which is thirty miles per hour, is unreasonable or unsafe, that's five four five three five three of the Transportation Code. So you, you can lower it below that, you just need to have a traffic investigation study that shows why, or how.
So, I mean.
No, so we can't even lower it to twenty?
No, no, not, not below, not below the prima facie speed limit, I mean, great, you could lower it to five miles an hour if you can show that that is effectively reasonable and safe for, for the area that you're, that you're trying to do it, but the, the, the whole idea is, the state wants to provide for continuity and stability in, in, in speed limits, and, and if cities wanna go below that. Again, Mike, I thi- I think your, I think your instinct on this is right, it's a very low-risk thing, but I've still, I've, I've still, I've still gotta advise.
Okay, but my question was, we can lower it to twenty-five, but not to twenty? Is that, is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, we cannot lower it below thirty without a traffic and engineering study.
Adrian, I would like to retract my previous motion.
Um.
Well, should we retract it, or just make another motion to?
Well, since it passed, um.
Oh.
But that was with.
And a motion.
The reason.
That was before we.
The reason why I had voted for it was because you had said that Tommy said it was okay, it was all, everything was all right, so I was like, okay, but now that I'm hearing the attorney saying that it's not, I don't want my name to be on a motion that could potentially, like, after it's advertised, that it, they could possibly bring about a lawsuit, I don't wanna be in, involved in a lawsuit, so therefore, I would like to retract.
Rescind your vote.
Yes, rescind it.
So, should we then re-vote on this item?
What, 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 what you need to do is make a motion to rescind the passage of the ordinance.
That's what I was, a motion to.
I make a motion to resc- rescind the motion that I made, um.
I thought Mike made that.
Did I, oh, did you make it, Mike? Oh, yeah, you did, I seconded.
Yeah.
Come on, Mikey.
I, I'd just like to have, I'd have more information, cuz it's critical, look at that chart, look at that chart up there, folks.
Yeah.
Look at the chart, and I'm thinking, what are the, I, I mean, I, I, I'm frustrated here.
I'd love to get some more information as a, as a citizen of this city.
Uh.
Well, I can, I, I will do some research and find out.
Maybe, you know what we could do, how about if we do this, how about if we tape, can we table it?
Yeah.
How about if we table it?
Well, we made a motion, I was saying.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll rescind my motion.
You, 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 you can't, you can't, you, what, the motion you would need to make is rescind the passage of the, of the previous ordinance and table the agenda item.
I could hear you, Ken, what'd you say?
Rescind your motion.
What needs to be done is make, yeah, make, make a motion to, to rescind the passage of the prior ordinance and table the motion for a future council.
Okay, 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 I'll, I'll rescind.
I make a motion.
I make a motion to rescind the ordinance two zero two-two-two zero nine, and in return, I wanna table this ordinance for future, uh, studies on traffic, future studies or information required, like a traffic study, having additional information.
Okay.
Sorry, guys, I thought all my Ts were crossed.
Okay, uh, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, and we weren't gonna have to address the.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry for being a gadfly on that, I think, I think it's a great idea. Mike, I think your analysis is probably right on in the exposure, um, this is, this is the unfun and frustrating part of my job, is that I think the law oftentimes gets, it gets in the way of good things and good ideas, and, and this is.
I agree.
This is one of those, because nothing, 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 nothing but good comes from this, so I, I am, I am sorry to be the bearer of bad news, and please don't take it as me disagreeing, I think this is a great idea, and I support the idea.
I agree, you gotta protect us, I agree, we are a city, we are government-elected officials, and I agree, so hopefully we can get some additional information and do a supposedly a traffic study would not cost us a fortune.
Yeah.
All right.
It's, it's, it's in it all.
Okay, thank you, bud, appreciate it.
And we weren't gonna have to do four point three V because it's already twenty-five. Okay, so we're gonna go on to four point four, discussion and possible action on change on, on Chapter ninety-one point eleven, Parks Advisory Board to read as Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And, uh, it's open for discussion.
The, those are found.
So why do we wanna change this? Um, so.
Changing an ordinance is a pain.
Let me ask a question, a question I have, what, why, why are we adding recreation to the Park Advisory Board?
So if you look at the external packets.
Okay.
Um, there's the explanation why, it was motioned by the Parks Advisory Board, and it was passed by the Parks Advisory Board. Um.
Sorry about that.
And, uh.
Just move, are you done?
Well, the.
Go ahead, explain.
Initial purpose is to expand the. When external entities are looking into the city and dealing with the Parks Advisory Board, they also read recreation. In the city ordinances, you might find a couple of references that the Parks Advisory Board is also responsible for the recreation of the cities, so Parks and Recreation, and often those titles end up going together anyhow, and so that title is just kind of completing their purposes and duties as a board. Um, that, that conversation also was developed during the Parks Advisory Board.
Recreation, and maybe we ought to do that, but I don't think we need to right now. You gotta just improve the park. It's just me, my thing.
That's good.
Okay, and I recognize Ms. Devaney.
I'm, I'm the chair of the Parks Advisory Board, we, our, our report did not get sent to y'all, well, it got sent, but it did not get on the agenda.
This one?
No, that's part of it, that I had to redo. The whole report was not put together, I did the readheads and everything, but it did not get sent through. Part of what we wanted to do was to make it a Parks and Recreation, therefore we could go after grants as a recreation, we can get more grants by having a Parks and Recreation than we could by just having a Parks Department. So we would like to bring in money to the Parks Department to have recreation. We also felt like we can extend the Parks Department by offering programming through a Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, that, therefore bringing people into the parks to do maybe yoga in the park, they have bicycle rodeo, you know, as they were going, to bring in, um, some more people that we were not bringing in previously. But you had asked for us to find ways to bring in money, having a recreational department of Parks and Recreation would bring in money as they attend the events, they can, if you were having yoga, you could take in maybe five dollars per person to sign up for the class, to do it for a semester, a month, two months, whatever, it would have to be determined, but that's one way of bringing some money into the city for the parks.
Have you, have you interfaced with the, uh, River Advisory Board? Because, I mean, that's, that's the problem we're having, is we have more and more people coming to the parks due to the river, and we really have issues covering the expenses of, of the parks because of the amount of people coming in. Have y'all, have y'all interfaced with each other?
We have not, we have a meeting hopefully in September, but we're just discussing signage at that time, but recreation, it does not have to be at the park itself, it could be in another building.
Another, like, explain, another building?
You could go, you could use the library, maybe you could rent Carlton's building, but, um, I've been to.
Wait a minute, is that, is that, wait a minute, is a building a park?
No, you can have your programming there sponsored by the Parks Department, so.
Wait a minute, I.
What, can I finish?
Okay, explain it to them, I'm, I'm a little confused.
When we lived in Plano, we had a Parks and Recreation Department, okay? I would sign up for classes to go to class, to do various things, one of them was how to design your own house through the Parks and Recreation Department. We would meet at the high school, and we had our classes for a whole semester, several months, and it cost us maybe thirty-five dollars per person attending the class. So you don't have to have it at the parks. If you had a yoga class, open yoga, go yoga, whatever, at the parks, then you could charge for that, but it doesn't, I, it does not have to be river-related to be a recreational department or a recreational program.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm, parks are great, I'm, I'm for the parks as my campaign, I'm all for it, but I still say it's all interfaced in this town, the parks and the river, and I know we, we need to find a way to get income, and grants would be excellent.
Just because you go to the river doesn't mean you're going, you know, to the cars doesn't mean you're going to the river.
Most of the time, most, most of.
We are going to keep developing.
Okay, let's let that council speak.
Go ahead.
Who knows, Jan has her hand up.
Um, uh, where are we in the parks as far as just plain maintenance? I mean, we're, we're already, we're already expanding this into recreation, a soccer field, maybe a possible, um, Little League, we're not ready for that. I don't think we are, we don't even have a regular maintenance scheduled right now. Uh, minor improvements to the, to the equipment that we already have.
We don't have any.
You know, let's, let's take baby steps.
This is just a name change. It ought to.
It's also an ordinance, which is, takes a lot of time and effort for the city, I just don't think we're ready for it right now. Let's get some.
The chair hasn't recognized it.
No, that's just, that's just my, that's saying, we need to have, uh, you know, regular maintenance for the parks of what we have now.
Okay, well, I, I know what you're saying, and I have discussed this with the Parks Advisory Committee and, and the mayor, but based on the budget that we currently have for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which is twenty-five thousand dollars, we do not have enough money to maintain the park and do any additional infrastructure improvements. Perhaps her suggestion of having a recreational division will bring us into the opportunity of having grants or having more of a wider variety of programs that could be associated with the Parks Department, and thus bringing in more revenue to improve the aspects of the maintenance in which we're lacking. And so that's sort of what, what I see, because the only thing that we've discussed about trying to raise money for the parks is to charge admission to come to the park by the carload, say, but we're nowhere near ready to start to do that based on the lack of fencing, the lack of gates, the lack of personnel, and all these things, so maybe this would be a small step in order to try and recruit, increase our revenue by having recreational programs in our parks or associated.
See some action of having, you know, you know, uh, the parks maintained on a regular basis.
Well, it's two separate issues.
I think what we're discussing tonight is just a name change, right? There, there's nothing of substance that's changing regarding the Parks Advisory Board other than expanding their name. Unless I'm missing something.
Yeah, well, so that you can.
Name change.
Just a name.
Parks and Rec.
Well, you're the park guy here, if it's, if it's a beneficial thing, I mean, it's, and we need it, we all, we need all the help we can.
To get grants.
Well, I mean, if, yeah, I agree.
Okay.
And, and Mrs. Devaney does grants, I mean, and so that's a good thing.
I mean, so, okay, since we are talking about, like, with the grant, so who's going to be doing the grants?
Y'all have a grant person, it depends on the grant. Um, what I did this past week was, I went ahead, since we've already had wildflowers in the parks before, it's been approved, I went ahead and put a grant in for five hundred dollars for wildflower seed, that's a small grant, I can do that one, but anything larger, then you would have to go in front of the city council and get the approval from the city council before the person doing the grants proceeds. If it's me, then I would want approval, I wouldn't want to go further without approval. If it's a large state grant, if it's a large federal grant, y'all have, uh, a person that does the grants, so it, depending on the size of the grant and who it's with, is who we go through.
I'm just, you know, because is that something that the city would like take on as far as getting with Mr. Engelby, who's going to be seeking out the grants, uh, who's going to be applying for the grants? Um, I know it's a name, it's a name change for the grants, but also with the name change for the grants, it's like, who's going to be doing the work?
And, and.
Depends on the grant.
Yes, so, uh, you know, right now, we're looking at a wildflower grant, when we haven't even decided, uh, when and how our lawns are, I mean, the, the parks are going to be maintained.
What, what we've done, uh, for the approval for two years in the past, is we have a certain segment that we have done, we went up through the library, offered to do that, and it was, um, mowed under this past year, and then the drought hit, so we got no reseeding of that, so that's why I had to go for a grant if it was going to happen in the same spot. If y'all decide you don't want that grant, that's fine, I went through the library to do it for the parks.
Oh, I think grants are great, I'm all for it, I mean, all.
I mean, there's the Texas Parks and Wildlife that has given me a thought, go ahead on one.
That's fantastic, more than, I mean, more grants we can get, better.
It's a, it's a.
I, I, you do have to have the name change first, but also when we do start advertising it on the city website and people see Parks and Recreation, they're going to want to know, like, what the recreation, like.
Like the bicycle rodeo would have been something that you could put through the Parks and Recreation.
It was through a safety.
Right.
Grant, which was through a certain general.
A grant, I mean, you could have put through there, if you decide to have to go yoga, then you could get, uh, through the Humanities Texas, you could get somebody to do the yoga once every month, twice or twice every month, and then there's part of a, a grant that you can use as a recreation.
So a real quick question, so what you're saying is, if we add the recreational to the park recreational advisory board, we'd have a better chance of getting grants? Well, that sounds, that sounds good to me.
I just don't think we're ready.
I mean, you're just getting, what's, if you get.
It's just small changes.
Yeah.
It's not like we're going to come back and have.
Well, if you're, if you're getting grants, that's what it's about.
Try to maintain what we have.
Can we ask Jared, Jared?
Just a name change, I mean, I agree.
It's just a name.
It's just a name, it's just a name change. Just a name change, correct? Correct?
That's all, that's all I see it as.
A name change, and if we could, and if we could get grants out of that, that's a no-bran, I totally agree.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, one, 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 one comment that was made earlier, um, anytime the city uses a grant administrative, administrator as a service, um, we have to go through a separate contract activity to, and proposal process to select an administrator under that, the terms of the grant that we're targeting, so while the city and the county have often used, um, a particular grant administrator, it, it doesn't mean that we have them on the hook for any future.
Correct.
Or something.
Correct.
Just, just want to clarify that point, but on, on this, you know, name helps, helps to clarify any ambiguities about the, what we're going for under these grants.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, but still, how many grants have we done just for the city? Instead, so we're going to now concentrate all our grant power to the parks?
Not necessarily.
We haven't even done anything for the city, we need a lot of.
Great, Jan grants are specific to each. I mean, well, grants are specific for parks, they're specific for projects, road projects, they're all specific, and if they're out there to get, might as well try to get them.
I, Mike, I hear what you're saying, and Jan, and I hear what you're saying, and I like the, the, you know, the opportunity to be able to get grants, because like, what city wouldn't want that, but also like, with, it's, whenever you're saying it's just a name change, really, it's not just a name change, there's so much more that goes into it, so.
A lot of responsibility.
Words carry weight, and then whenever you're using, um, whenever you're adding recreation into there, like, you know, it would be nice, like, I've heard goat yoga, that's good, I've heard, uh, you know, the bicycle rodeo, yeah, that's good and everything, but whenever we put this and we're advertising it and we're ready to put it on the website, it would also be nice to let the community know what actually is entailed under the recreate, recreation part, like, what are the plans, is it Little League, is it a soccer league, is it a, um, you know, uh, the home buying class in there, like, this is what is going to happen, you know, under this umbrella of Parks and Recreation. The city of Martindale is happy to announce a name change with these changes rather than it just being a name for grants, so, I mean.
Why would we develop a recreation department if, if it's not in the name?
Who's in the recreation department?
That it would be, it would, it would just be part of the Parks and Recreation, but why would we develop recreational programs with grant money if, if it's not part of what we do?
We don't have any facilities directly.
But a park, if you have goat yoga, you know, that type of thing, if that would be.
Goat yoga?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing?
They walk on your.
Yeah, okay, but you still have to pay for it, no, I'm, I want, no, it's five dollars to, to.
I mean, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to put it out there, the word recreation is already.
We're ready.
Anyway, so just clarify, just, we're just.
Already on the ordinances, that they're supposed to look at these things.
But we haven't changed the ordinance at all, it just put the name in it, right?
Right.
Is that correct?
Here says, this bottom item, let me zoom in a little.
Is that what's in the ordinance?
Yeah, it's in the ordinance right now, Jan, so all we're doing is to just add that right out.
I want to make a motion to amend chapter ninety-one point eleven Parks and Advisory Board to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any more discussion? Okay, Sam, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion does carry.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, you use the word board a lot, is that really a proper term for people that volunteer? They're not, it's more of an advisory committee, it's not really a board.
Well, actually, that's, that's already been passed several years, that's, we'd have to amend this.
We'll amend all of it.
We have to amend, I mean, that's already, it's already an ordinance, so we'd have to go through the whole process.
So it should be committee.
Okay. Give us some money.
That's a good question.
I agree with that. Thank you.
Okay, um, we'll move on to the next one, uh, four point five, uh, volunteer resolution, a resolution from the Martindale City Council to work with Phi Gamma Delta Fraternity, but, sorry, fraternity from Texas State University to coordinate volunteer efforts with the fraternity and the city of Martindale, and that is in, uh, that was added as an extra.
As an extra in our package?
Well, it didn't get put in the notebook, it was laying on the table next to the notebook.
Oh, here it is, right here.
So.
Gotcha.
The report and the recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, yes, so I have their representative on Zoom as well, so let me see if I can get him, see if he's still here, yes, he is, so let me unmute him, and. Mike, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I can.
All right, thank you, so this is our representative from Phi Gamma Delta, um, let me put that resolution up on the board, and the recommendations from the Parks Advisory Board, I believe. So here is that reference towards the volunteer ordinance, uh, I'm sorry, resolution. Okay, so, um, I'll speak briefly on this, so Phi Gamma Delta is a fraternity in Texas State, and previously, both Parks Advisory Board and City Council mentioned some talks about getting a volunteer force from Martindale, you know, we, and in the past, such as the citywide cleanup, is, I believe, a hundred percent, or just about, majority of the participants were volunteers. It'd be nice to have the extra manpower to support the city with, uh, you know, having more community service, inviting others from other organizations to help us out with, uh, activities and cleanups that the city might conduct.
Yeah, like right now, the, the trees need watering.
Yeah, you know, and there's organizations out there that are looking for.
I was nodding.
There, there are organizations looking for volunteer opportunities, and so, you know, Texas State has a bunch of young, healthy men to help us with our yard work here at the city, and, uh.
You got to add women now, come on.
Right, and, uh.
Well, this is a fraternity.
But women can volunteer too, little sisters, that's right, can't leave out, can't let leave out the ladies now.
Is that right, Mr. Grubbs, that you have a?
Yes, we do have some sororities that we can partner with to help.
I like it.
And, and so.
For the marriage.
I'll, I'll introduce Mike Grubbs, he's a, he's a undergraduate at Texas State, and he is the projects coordinator for the fraternity, and he's been speaking with Carol Devaney as Parks Chair.
Have you been, have they been speaking with the whole Parks Department?
Yes, and so he, he's introduced himself with the Parks Department, and they're aware of, of what they're trying to do with Martindale. Yes. And so, he, he's introduced himself with the Parks Department and they're aware of, of what they're trying to do with Martindale. And, uh, and so here is the resolution.
Parks people here? Thanks, Carol.
I don't believe so. I can check. I can brush through it, but no promises. Doesn't seem so.
That's okay. Go ahead. Finish.
And so, as, as they're, they're part of the fraternity, they require service hours, community service hours. And so, in exchange of helping us here at the city with community work, I, I've included that any city official could recognize the efforts and work done by the members of the fraternity.
I, I had a question for Mike. Hi, I'm Sam Clinton, uh, on the, I was the previous chairman of the Parks Advisory Committee, and I also headed up volunteer groups. Uh, during the course of my time, we say poured concrete slabs for garbage cans. We uh, reset telephone poles as obstructions. We strum cable. I have a plan now to redo some split rail fencing in, in one of the parks. Do you think your fraternity would be available, say, on a monthly, or how often on a monthly basis? For, uh, say, the first Saturday of the month, on a monthly basis, would, would that work?
We can do monthly, yes, sir. I can get them, I can make a plan that we can be with y'all. Uh, what, uh, week or week specifically would you have in mind? End of the month or start of the month or middle?
They, they have obligations also, uh, as a fraternity, like, tailgating.
Yeah.
So, this is just.
Okay, I don't need to.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, well, I'm just trying to see how, how often. Okay.
We can.
I make a resolution, I make a motion, resolution two zero two two dash zero nine dash zero one, a resolution to the City Council, the City of Martindale, the City, Texas to collaborate with Phi Gamma Delta F I J I fraternity from Texas State University to coordinate volunteer efforts with the fraternity and the city of Martindale.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
Um, I, I just have one more question for Mike. What, what kind of tools do you provide or do, do you have, or do we work together on hand tools and, and the such?
So, we would most likely have to work together on supplies. We don't necessarily have a budget to purchase supplies, but I do know that brothers do have some small equipment that I could definitely ask and see, like, if they have hammers, we can get nails. Something small. We don't have, like, hacksaws or anything like that if need be.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Pleasure.
That's all I have.
Discussion? Okay, Sonia, how do you vote? Uh, Jan, how do you vote? Okay, so the motion carries.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike.
Stick around.
Bring your working gloves. I'll be in contact with y'all. Have a wonderful evening, okay?
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Pleasure.
And thank you, Carol.
Yeah, thanks.
Sounds good.
Nothing like you.
For collaboration.
But they've already said a soft yes on the cleanup for the city, which I need y'all, y'all always need help get stuff in and river cleanups. So, I'm, I'm very enthusiastic with working with DJ.
Thank you. Thank you, that's good, okay.
Okay, now, the next one, eh, we did put them separately, um, because there is difference between residential and commercial. So, chapter one fifty-five, this has come to us as a recommendation by the, uh, River Advisory Board. Committee. Whatever we wanna call them. So, um, let me do this. There, this afternoon, uh, I had a discussion, and there is a little bit of a discrepancy between these recommendations and the table of, what, what do you call that?
Here's chapter, property development standard table, one fifty-five, ten, or one-ten.
Uh, I'll, I'll show both charts, but what we're referring to this evening is chapter one fifty-five point zero seven six and so forth. Uh, later on in a different council meeting, we'll have to update a different table found in our city ordinances.
So that they are.
Yeah, that they, that they match.
Yes.
But tonight's discussion is on point zero seven six and, and forward.
So, the first one is on the single-family residential, uh, changing the impervious cover from thirty-five percent to twenty percent.
Real quick question. I thought the River Advisory was gonna do a presentation.
Um, she chose.
They did last time, didn't they?
She, she did not. She, I spoke with her. She said she didn't have a presentation. She just was trying to push this forward. Essentially, everything on this, uh, read ahead is the same thing that.
We went over, she did a presentation last time.
Yeah. Yeah, you would check it, so maybe.
That's right, that's what it was, a workshop.
Presentation was on front prevention, chapter one fifty-three.
Yes.
We have not.
So, this was, yeah, 'cause we talked about it, we were, we were trying to put it in with one fifty-three, and Virginia was so obvious about saying it's not in one fifty-three, it's one fifty-five. So, we had a separate address and, um, took a focus, if you will, on trying to, um, increase the standards on the previous cover. So, the issue is when we compare the previous coverage that we have here versus the other cities, and I've done a lot of research now, and at the San Marcos and San Antonio specific, specifically with regard to, you know, we are almost entirely the floodway, floodplain in some cases. Most, obviously, all these other cities are not in the same predicament. They're much bigger. So, uh, but they get to these areas where they're very confined into the target, what I call the target area, the flood area, they start discussing slope. And they just start discussing, um, water runoff studies with regards to land, which is very obviously costly, difficult to do. Um, and, um, you know, very hard for the city to, to sometime quantify that this land is, has this much of a slope and therefore it has to have this type of an impervious cover. So, the thought process was to just tighten the previous cover restrictions so that it's not where we're just, you know, all of a sudden, there's all this land that's gonna be now rezoned and, um, that's gonna be, now it's just gonna be concrete. You know what I mean? So, the goal is to obviously slow down the water flow, and we just saw a lousy two inches of rain and see what happened to the road down here on River Road to, to all our houses, you know? Um, and what's that gonna be like when we get another six, seven inches? So, the whole thing is it's only gonna get worse as we go further down, and that other, this other land all gets developed on our side of eighty and obviously on the other side of eighty. So, Virginia's obviously very strong about trying to improve the previous cover, uh, uh, you know, requirements. Um, I've spent a lot of time doing the calculations, uh, with regard to what they should be. Um, uh, to be quite honest with you, a couple of, we're, you know, we're reaching for the moon, I think, on a few of them. Uh, you know, trying to go high, you know, keep, keep the numbers as low as possible. Um, uh, right now, our, our standards are better than average, but they're not the best, if you know what I mean. So, um, the goal is to get as low as possible. It's still a lot of development. So, if you take a, um, piece of property that's a half acre lot, and you're talking about somewhere around twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two thousand square feet of land, and you're gonna put a three thousand square foot house on it, twenty-five hundred, three thousand square foot house, you got another thousand square feet of driveway, eight hundred to a thousand square feet of driveway. And you had another eight hundred to a thousand square feet of either deck, carport, something like that. So, now you're getting into that five thousand-ish, fifty-five hundred, six thousand square feet of developed or what I call impervious coverage. You're gonna be paving of some of that land. So, you look at it as a percentage of a half acre lot. You need to be thinking about, do you want it any more dense than that? And that very basically becomes the, the argument. You start with the house and you say, how much coverage do you want? Do you want it just to be, allow them to concrete the whole house like they are? I, I lived in Vegas for fifteen years. Can you tell you it's not a free sign? You know what I mean? Uh, but that's what, that's what they did. You know what I mean? And the ground part is, you know what? So, it didn't matter, but they have a lot of green space instead. This is the way it developed. You know what I mean? We are not in San Marcos or San Antonio where we're in a densely populated area. Our goal is to, I would assume, to be in a much, you know, more spread out environment than that. So, if you look at the San Marcos code, when they talk about what they call rural residential, which is the outer outlining, that's really us. And then the code there is somewhere under the forty percent, thirty-five, you know, and lower. So, that's the standard that is applied. That's basically where the community is right now. Okay? So, uh, Virginia's goal was against twenty. I would love for it to pass at twenty. I think it's awesome. Um, I definitely think it needs to be lower than thirty-five, but if you do the math, what I just gave you on there, you're somewhere in the twenty, twenty-five percent range. It's a typical home that should be, or has been built typically in the Martindale area over the last fifteen, twenty years. That is the benchmark. And, and do we wanna maintain that benchmark, or do you wanna allow development in a more, you know, condensed form? And, and obviously, our recommendation, particularly because we're going so close to the river, is we do not allow it to be a very highly concentrated development. You need to allow it, create some type of overlap.
But as far as building, you can still do pure and being wooden decks where the, you're not going, you're not, you know.
I'm only making a recommendation. That, that, that's outside of our.
Right, I know, I know. There's ways to get around.
I understand that. I'm just, you know, and that's another reason to make it as, as, you know, make the previous cover as low as possible and make them do other things, you know? They can, they can do the, you know, papers that are, that, that handle the previous, you know, runoff properly, not just throw concrete on the ground. There's other solutions that can be done into the, into our building code, and, and you're gonna force them to do it and do it, do it smartly because the impervious coverage restrictions are, are stronger.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'm pretty interrupted, but I do want to make it aware, uh, some things that are going on in Texas. And specifically, we're talking about Edwards Offalford. Okay, the Highland Lakes area, um, working with the L C R A, they have made an agreement and they have changed their ordinance to they, that whole area is now at fifteen percent.
And that includes commercial.
That can be, that can be good. So, uh, good for impervious cover. I'm doing some research, and there are, um, two other communities right now, two communities, two other cities, actually not within our, uh, Edwards Offalford, but one in Dallas and then one in, um, East Texas, and I apologize, I don't have the names, I will give them for you, that are considering doing the same. And the reason, because what is happening is we're losing, we're getting, we're losing our dirt, our runoff, and we're having more flooding. There's more people, there's more building, there's more commercial. So, so if you think about these, uh, very, very strict, strict, um, percentages that some of these people are looking at, these numbers are.
And all these communities are communities that are similar to us. They're in a highly water sensitive, uh, area with flooding that occurs on a, on a continuous basis. So, it needs to be, unfortunately, in my, my personal opinion, San Marcos was already built up before they realized the consequence of this. And now you're.
And we're suffering.
Yeah, and we're suffering for it. And so, here we are setting, to be quite honest with you, setting the tone that goes from here, that way, downstream. So, you, you know, to me, that's really what it's about. And that's what Virginia's answer was in the comment was, you know, that's the spearhead thought process behind this. This is the standard that you're creating, that it can be done. You know what I mean? That this should be the standard, particularly for us on the river. You know what I mean? The standard should be what? And the standard obviously should be stronger than, and there, as Dorothy brought up, there are other communities we've done research on that is below the twenty percent on everything, which obviously is.
Because you did the math of you building a two thousand square foot home with a driveway.
Yeah, on a half acre lot, um, you could be at the twenty-five percent. The twenty-five percent is very difficult. You just do the math.
What about, what, what about?
We're just looking at one.
What about twenty percent?
R one, R one.
You can do it in twenty percent. Um, obviously, when you start decking, doesn't always count. Um, I'm always referring to, you know, just, you know, if you went down River, North of River Road, you said as an example on my map, you know, I'm going down there, I would, across the street from your house, you know, look at it, agility, who's put a RV pad in, and he's really done a lot of paving, to be quite honest with you, in a negative tone, I would say, but there's a lot of paving. That is a high percentage of impervious coverage. I mean, there is a lot of concrete on that, on that property. I mean, it is, it is over the twenty-five percent range.
So, you mentioned twenty-five, I mean.
The goal would be twenty. I mean, the standard right now is thirty-five, which, I'd be honest with you, it's not ordered, okay, comparatively to other places, but I don't think we're other places. You know what I mean? Right. You know what I mean? If you look at the code for San Marcos, when they talk about the watershed area, it's stronger than the standard they have for the rest of the county and the rest of the city. Okay? So, you know, what they end up using is slope requirements, and then the slope basically makes the impervious cover down to under fifteen percent because slope factors in. And that becomes a whole different calculation. If you look at the San Antonio code, they talk about slope is a massive, the, the chart is, is crazy. I mean, I, it would take me like a day to explain it to you.
So, if you had a sloped driveway?
If you had a slope on the lane, like you're on the river here, you have this embankment, there's a slope. They actually make you do watershed studies to determine what your previous cover level is based upon the slope.
Okay, got it.
So, you're doing watershed tests and saying this, yeah, exactly. Okay, so now you know why I didn't bring that up, you know what I mean?
Wait a minute. An, an impervious cover, is it, does that include like, uh, a rock driveway or, or rock?
Rock would be per, if it's, if it's loose rock, if it's loose rock.
If it's loose rock. Like, my driveway is not, doesn't fall away, because it's compacted. It's a compacted surface. So, it's, it's in that gray.
It's not impervious. So, it is impervious.
So, we, we have a possible action tonight. I mean, do, do.
Yeah, we have to figure out how we're gonna do this.
So, do we? I'm asking your opinion, should we come back, or should we table it and then get more, get more information?
It's, it's, it's up to you. I, I personally believe the, that, I looked at the twenty percent of the R one, um, it's tough, it's tough, twenty percent's tough, twenty percent's tough. It really is.
But even in, in R one, there is the height restriction of twenty-eight point five feet, so you could build a two and a half story house and, and still take up the same amount of square footage as you would for a one-story house and just build the two-story house. Or does the height of the building on the wall and the rain hitting the wall, does that have an impact on?
That is, that is not in our definition, as far as I read it. So, that's the, that, we're not getting, and that's what I was alluding to before, we're not getting complex. If you go and look at the San Marcos code, just in that section, it's, uh, eighty-something pages just on, because every single one of these is defined with a, it's like a seven or eight page definition. It talks about the second floor situation and then the runoff associated with that. Our code is much obviously simpler, and, and we can make it complicated.
Hey, we asked you a question. Wonder if we add, took an average and went down the middle, say.
Well, I, I, I do think the lower we make it, the better. Okay, so we obviously, let's just start with that. I do, I have looked at the twenty number. Personally, I've done the math several times. Twenty percent is very difficult. It's, it's lovely.
What are you saying, very difficult?
It would make.
It may, it may agree with us. There are, there are some houses on River Road that would be hard, yes.
It's difficult when you add in driveway and the blockways. They don't have the concrete, right?
That is true.
There's a lot of impervious road out there.
Yeah.
A lot of zero scape kinda stuff.
But, but, but in your opinion.
Giving stones that the water seeps through.
Right.
Of the driveway.
If we did, if we took the average and say, took the, the average of two together, you'd have, you'd have more, you'd have more flexibility and you could.
Okay.
You're taking fifty to, fifty to twenty. Fifty is just horrible, and you're gonna drop it down to twenty, so take the average, and that's thirty-five.
I mean, I personally think all the Rs need to be under the thirty number. That's my number. It needs to be, I, twenty-five to me is a, twenty's a tough number. I'm gonna say right now, I've gone, like, I, I pick on Mr. Biggs's neighbor across the street. I mean, but they got a lot of concrete. And to your point, to your point, I totally agree. But I totally agree, I totally agree. But that is a citizen that's lived here that we allow them to do that. That, that is a high use, not the ideal use per, per se, and not something you should strive for.
So, what are you talking about?
But there's a neighbor, there's someone else, maybe that has, they have over twenty percent, almost over twenty-five percent of their yard, right at, it's really close, right now, is concrete. Okay, so it's, it's concrete.
They're on the river.
They're across from eighty.
The only thing, the only thing you're gonna make, you're gonna make it difficult for people to have a bigger lot with an R one, they wanna put a two thousand square.
Yes.
What you're saying.
Two thousand is not a problem. You're bringing a three thousand square feet home, and then you wanna do a concrete driveway, and you wanna do a detached garage. Now, you're having a problem. I mean, you don't, and what Charlie made a great point is, you don't, me, I, I have, I don't have a concrete driveway. At my house, I have gravel.
This will push people out of huge concrete, and that's a good thing.
Yeah, so, so it can be done. I'm just telling you what, I tell you what the facts are, as I know, and being honest with you about it. This is, these are the examples of what's been built. The ideal would be to be like. The ideal would be to be like, we have, we have a driveway that's, it's not concrete, it's a huge driveway and it's, it's rock. I'm never going to not make it rock, okay? It's there for a reason, you know what I mean? Number one, I'm too cheap to do it, but that's another show.
I'd kind of like to think about this a little bit more because this could kill business and this could kill, this means that all the homes are going to be very small and that means taxes are going to be.
That is, I'll have to politely disagree. Okay, I'm going to politely disagree.
That's if you have half acre lot. Not everybody has a half acre.
But you could build a two story house.
You can build a two story house, which obviously a few people have, as you guys have.
Unless you're an elderly person who.
Okay, let's, 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 let's talk about compromise flexibility here. If you split the difference, if you average those two out, you, your, your, your impervious cover would be more strict than San Marcos has currently.
Yes.
So that's what governments.
And it needs to be because we are not.
I understand.
We're not in the flood, we're not in the watershed area that San Marcos is. And that's the, that's what, you know, we could talk about impervious cover all you want. Underlying fact is we are not in the same ballpark. We are in a floodway.
I got flooded in fifteen, I know, I know.
We're a floodway, flood plain. We are not, we are not five miles from the, we're not Lockhart. You know, we're not, you know, two or three miles off the river and we're another two, you know, two hundred feet above. We are twenty-five feet, I'm thirty feet above the river. That's what we're concerned about. So, I mean, we can look at everyone else's code all we want, but the underlying thing is it doesn't apply. It doesn't, it doesn't affect our situation.
Jared has to say. Jared, do you have some thoughts?
Yeah, the first thought is even on the R three, R four, especially in R four, where we allow for smaller lots, you know, as small as three thousand or four thousand square feet, at forty percent. It doesn't allow for, allow for much. And then.
And we want to change it to forty.
Just a minute, just.
Yeah, so it's, some of those, some of these numbers are, are draconian, I think. And then the, the commercial sector, I, there are pervious improvements you can make to ground cover, you know, I've seen those, they exist. I don't know how well they, they would work in a commercial district that sees heavy traffic. And then the third, the third thought I have is, given the, you know, I'm, I'm not a long time resident and I haven't seen the floods firsthand, I'll be the first to admit that. But reducing the impervious cover or increasing the, however you want to view. Changing the pervious cover requirements, I don't think is going to change the, the flood dynamics of the San Marcos River. At least not with the city being anywhere close to its current status.
It can make a difference.
Well, it will make a difference to people downstream from us.
Yeah, you're missing, I mean, the underlying spirit of this is, you said, no, I'm telling you, this is the setting the standard. This is us saying, we're the first city downstream of the head of the San Marcos and we're setting the tone of what it should be. Then we go down everyone downstream here and we say, this is the standard, the minimum that you guys should be striving for. Because you want us to help you, this is what you need to help the person down. This is us forward thinking. This is not us just saying, hey, they don't do it so it doesn't affect us, so we don't care. Well, I'm sorry, guys, that's not why I'm here. That's not why I'm on the committee, that's not why I come to every meeting. I come here just to set a standard.
Can I throw something out there? Mayor. Mayor. Say, we, we, we averaged it out, say, twenty to thirty-five, we split, we averaged the two together. That way we'd have a stronger, we'd have a stronger impervious cover at San Marcos, but it would allow people to develop their, their property. If you went from, or say, remanufacture from fifty to thirty, you make it forty percent.
Which one are you talking?
I'm talking, I'm talking about every one of them, average amount, average the two together and take the average.
So from what we have.
So in other words, instead of making it twenty percent, make it twenty-seven point five percent.
Exactly, exactly.
Whatever's in between. Now, you said this is San Marcos? This is actually, this is Martindale.
This is Martindale, Martindale's on the left and then that's the recommendation from the river committee.
Yes, was going from thirty-five to twenty. And, and we have nine of these that we have to discuss. We've already been discussing just one.
But I'm saying is we take an, what, what, what I'm saying is their recommendations and then we take, we, what they recommend and what we currently have, we'll take an average of those two for a compromise to have those two averaged out.
But don't you think that we need to discuss these?
Well, we could table it and y'all could come back with more information, but I'm just saying, the mayor has concerns, we got people that have their land, they want to put a driveway in. I mean, I mean.
Yeah, I know.
But it's more important that.
I'd like to have more time.
If I could, if I could speak. So we have a river advisory committee for a reason. They're the ones that have researched it. They're the ones who have looked in San Marcos and then downstream. I think with us setting the standard as far as with our disposable, disposable container ordinance, our night sky ordinance, like, I think we're putting Martindale on the map for saying we're a community that cares about our area and we want to protect our, you know, our land. And we want to make sure that people who are building here are, are conscious of building. Nobody is saying you cannot build or you cannot, you know, do some, they're just saying to use smarter ways to do it. Use smarter ways to do a driveway, do, build up on pier and beam instead of putting all the concrete on the ground. Nowhere in this, in what I'm reading, is it saying that you, it's going to infringe anybody from building, but it's going to make you build environmentally conscious. And I think everything that we've been doing in this town, like, sets a standard. So I, I personally don't see anything wrong with these numbers. But I think that whenever we do, if we are saying that, okay, well, let's take an average, but later on, whenever we have more people and more development coming in and then there's more concrete then, than if we would have set the standard when we should have, it's coming down, I mean, if we see what's happening in Lockhart and we see what's happening in San Marcos and we're right here and we see what's coming in from Guadalupe County, for us not to consider this and to still drag our feet and take time, whenever we've done stuff, you know, like.
I, I'm going to just clarify, I totally agree with this. I'm not against it, I'm just saying, as a negotiating part for people that are against it, that, I mean, that's going to be a possible compromise. I'm just saying that. I'm throwing that out there. I do agree with the impervious cover. I'm totally agree. I got flooded in fifteen.
Okay, all right. Now, how are we going to handle this as, as a council? We've got nine of these that we need to discuss. Are we going to just, just make a motion to go ahead and say, let's take the recommendations? I've read them all. They're pretty strict. I wonder about the commercial, do we need to talk to other people, maybe commercial own, people who have commercial property? Can they, you know, Jack was talking about somebody putting in a convenience store. It's almost all concrete.
Exactly.
So I think like, you know, whenever this is done, like I said, it just, it doesn't restrict you from building. It just makes you build within the environment, you know.
So you're kind of for, let's just take the recommendations.
I, I am.
Okay.
And, and I'll, well, let me just say one thing is that I read up on something before about San Marcos and how it's grown fifty-three percent since twenty-ten from eighty-six thousand people to two hundred and twenty-two thousand people. Now, we can control what they do in San Marcos, but as a result of the development from one-ten, that's coming on the Guadalupe and the Caldwell, Caldwell County side and all of the develop, that development that we're going to see in the future is on the north and the west side of us, which means all that water from those developments from the north and the west are going to be coming down towards us. We don't have much development on the east side, but I think that it is, is a good thing. And I saw something on the tube today about a green roof where they have a yard, a grass on the roof. But we can suggest these environmentally conscious of clustering homes, have, having a green roof, having pervious driveways and sidewalks and landscaping and rain swales and rain collection and do all these things as our city council has suggested to really set a precedent for us and the cities that are around us.
And, you know, just to, just to reemphasize, dirt does not have life in it. You need soil. You need things that are going to increase soil production in order to have life and the organisms that you need in the river, it all trickles down. So with concrete and dirt, you do not have life.
Adrian.
I do have a question, you know, this for the river Matthew. You said you studied this regarding properties that are half an acre, right? What about properties that are less half an acre, less than a half an acre? There's several properties on nineteen seventy-nine.
You know, I use that as an example, most of the properties that are, you know, on the river are of that size. And so I, I really spent a lot of time looking at the half acre, you know, that's across the street from me and a lot of local subdivisions out there are right in that, you know, point four to a half acre lots.
I, I would still consider part of nineteen seventy-nine.
Well, there's no development there. Those are predeveloped areas.
Right.
So I'm not using those because what's happened has happened. It's no different than San Marcos. Once you develop, an area that's been developed, you can't fix what's already been done. It's what's going forward. And so.
But the houses over here did flood, right?
Yeah, but.
So these smaller homes would be set to a smaller standard now?
Well, they're already there. You're not, we're not changing.
But what if a house burned and they needed to rebuild?
Because when this came up, I did look at smaller lots and there's some that are point seventeen acres. And so wouldn't they get hurt by this?
Wouldn't be able to rebuild.
You'd have, you'd have to change that.
Be cure and be.
Yes, a point seven.
Seventeen.
Yes, it's close to the R four, which is like a tenth of an acre.
Yes.
And only.
It's forty percent.
It's wood, right now it's seventy-five.
Right, right, right.
Like completely.
So they can still build because the, the standard that we're recommending.
And they're getting developers that want to get a tenth of an acre.
This is R one still along nineteen seventy-nine.
Most of, most of, most of our half acre lots are R one on the river.
Right, right.
And I will, I will.
That's what they're saying.
Star four?
That's R four.
Look at the map, look at the map. Most of the, most of the, the flood areas are R, R one and most of them are half acre lots.
R, R two.
R.
Well.
R two is. Isn't this still considered?
Also, also, but I'm saying, I will.
There's small lot, they have amnesty already. Those lots have amnesty. They've always had.
And I do, you know what? Just to clarify my position, I, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with that because San Marcos, we are basically, this town's mostly in a floodway or flood plain area. So.
That's ultimately what this, that's ultimately what it's about. It's like, like you said, if we're, if we're on the other side of eighty and we're three miles, four miles away, we have a different discussion. The standard probably should be this anyway.
I agree.
But, but we're not going to get, you know what I mean?
You know about industrial or commercial.
Well, there's no industrial within the city limits of Martindale. There is no industrial.
We're not, that doesn't mean that we're not going to get, get some developer that wants to come.
One of the things about the advisory board is planning. The next step on this is to educate and offer solutions to residents on how, what's available. So right now, I can't sit here and tell you.
That's.
Charlie probably knows, I know Charlie knows more. I definitely know Sam knows more about what is available, what products are available, how can you do this, you know?
It can be. Jared, go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, so Adrian, if you want to scroll down to the commercial, what? Our master plan and our goal, and we talked with developers and others, is in the commercial district, we want businesses that service the community, grocery stores, banks, pharmacies. Those, those create a lot of impervious cover. If we set draconian restrictions on that, we're increasing all these, I, I don't know the cost between, what's the cost for, you know, asphalt versus a fancy impervious cover and will have the same characteristics in terms of hardness and longevity. But we're potentially increasing costs for those businesses coming to the city. What I hate for happen is these type of requirements are an impediment to having a grocery store or a full service grocery store to have a grocery. And then banks and pharmacies and things. Did the river advisory board look at those issues?
It was discussed, obviously. The real issue is there are other solutions with regard to parking. There's other solutions other than just throwing concrete on the ground. And those things are improving daily and they're, you know, Virginia, unfortunately she's not here, can speak on that in much greater detail than I can. There are other solutions than just pouring the concrete down.
They do have, they do have those pervy, the pervious.
The pervious papers, as an example. There are solutions out there.
Yeah.
Can we look at this as maybe like a thing on your, you put, like a cap and trade or, you know, previous credit, previous cover credits to where somebody could.
In Vegas, in Vegas, that's what they do. In Vegas, when you build a development area, you're required to do so much parkland. So they do it in a park, so the master developer owns, you know, five thousand acres of land and they develop houses. They must put a park to collect, in, actually where we were before, it actually was a collection basin. They collected all the water from the ten thousand homes that were built uphill, if you will, of that. And that was where the big park was. And that was part of the cap and trade, as you're alluding to, that was done to cover their pervious cover requirements. And so there are solutions with regard to that, but it has to be done on a, it's no different than you have to create retention ponds for people when they're developing, you know, because they got to collect the water. It's the same thing. It's not like you do it there, it's just you have to do it. And so there are solutions that have to be made on people that have a bigger area. You're on highway eighty and you're putting a big building up, you're going to lose the first, I don't know how many feet, just because you've got a, you've got an easement with regard to rainwater drainage. So you've got that already, but yeah. The land must have this much pervious cover. You know, how we handle that over the whole, whole lot is to be deserved. It doesn't say it has to be right there where the building is. It just says the lot.
But I can't, I don't see a grocery store or.
If our focus.
Or anything that has green space.
Let Jared, let Jared talk.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jan. I, I didn't realize.
I'm just saying, if we're putting some kind of commercial, you know, I don't see, you know, a grocery store. I see a grocery store with a big building and a huge parking lot. I don't see a little big park or anything.
They could incorporate that in, into the design though.
I mean, I agree.
Charlie, go ahead. Yeah, Charlie, go ahead.
If there is a problem with that, you can always do a variance. If there's real hardship, you can always do a variance, but this will show as an example that please try to.
Everybody does.
And if you look at the multiple use, there is no requirement at all. It's, you could pave the whole thing over in one fifty-five to zero eighty-one.
There's a huge, there's a huge error, if you will, in the code, in one fifty-five, zero eighty-one, what it basically means, pave the whole thing in San Marcos. You can pave the whole thing.
Some of these buildings are all just on one little piece of land.
Okay, let Charlie.
In terms of people coming in and developing, if they know what the standards are, they, development's going to happen. They're coming, it's coming this way.
Yes, I know.
So this is going to have a standard here, not stop somebody from coming in and saying, well, I'm not going to come to market, I'm not going to come to this area. It's coming. It's not going to stop. And like I said, if there is a real hardship, there, you can do a variance. I hate to say that.
Or, or, or what, I think Jared's alluded to, he's saying, when you do a cap and trade type of situation, he's like, look, you're going to do this and you've got to help us with some parkland. I mean, that's the standard that we want to, do we want to make that the standard for the city? That's what the, that's what the recommendation of the river committee is. This is what we, this is what our recommendation is.
So I would like to go ahead and make a motion to accept the ordinance changes to reduce the maximum allowable impervious cover percentages in chapter one fifty-five, zoning codes one fifty-five, zero seven six, one five five, zero seven seven, one five five, zero seven eight, one five five, zero seven nine, one five five, zero eight zero, one five five, zero eight one, one five five, zero eight two, one five five, zero eight three, one five five, zero eight four, as, as presented.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, we have a motion. Is that, can't any more just discussion? Mike, how do you?
You know, this is a big decision that we're making.
I'll say yes, okay.
Sam, how do you?
I'll say yes.
Sorry.
The motion carries.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Okay, the future items, is there anything to add?
I was going to add this to it, but you don't need to now. I'm glad.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn at nine oh one P M.
I second.
Good enough.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
All right.
All right, Jared, do you have anything else for us?
No, but, um, if you want to call me about the agenda, um, we can talk about tonight or tomorrow, whenever your convenience is for next week.
Okay, I'll call you right now.